My gosh, we had ten kids in family galleries, six months to ten years.
We're calling this Planning Commission meeting of Monday, July 8th to order. Roll call, Emma is absent. Johnson?
Here.
I'm here. Fox?
Here.
Nobak?
Here.
Before we approve the agenda, I'm just gonna change a little bit on the public hearing. Actually, there's three separate ones. So it'll be a rezone and two conditional use permit public hearings. So we'll explain them as we go. So with that, can I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Fox?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both, most carries. Can I get an approval of the minutes from June 10th?
Move approved minutes?
Second.
Motion by Nobak, or was it, yeah, and second by Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody signed up for public input? Did you look, Neil? Okay, the next thing was, was gonna be public input and nobody signed up, so we'll dispense with that. The next items on the agenda are public hearings. So the first one will be a rezone application for Bethel's Rock. Zach, you wanna just kinda explain a little bit before we open it up? What's that? Okay.
Yeah, so Bethel's Rock Church had kind of inquired at the last Planning Commission meeting about putting a church at the location of 32057 64th Avenue. Currently, that site is zoned B2 highway business. Religious institutions or churches aren't a permitted use or even a conditional use. So tonight, they have a rezone application to rezone the property from a B2 to an RB residential business. Churches, religious institutions are allowed as a conditional use in that zone. So we're gonna be discussing how Planning Commission feels about a rezone, as well as the two conditional use permits for Bethel's Rock and Grand O2 to operate in that area.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, that being said, the, we're gonna open up the public hearing for the rezoning part of that application. So anybody wishing to address that, please come forward to the mic. Yep.
Thank you. I think I got it now.
Hello?
There you go.
Sounded right. Well, first and foremost, I wanna say thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to meet with you again. I know we had discussed a little bit last month, a little bit on the opportunity to do that. I just wanna reintroduce myself. My name is Pastor Brandon. And since last month, we've actually become our own church. So I am the lead pastor of Bethel's Rock Church, Cannon Falls. So we are our own entity and we are local and we are Cannon Falls. That's our address. And we're, we're coming to approach for a rezone because from discussions last month, that was what was suggested to us by Zach and the city. They said that that's what, what it would take in order for us to be able to utilize that building. So we just wanted to open up and just, I guess, discuss a little bit. I know most of it, we kind of discussed last month, but just to rekinda go over a few of them. It would be a partial tax exemption because I actually have Bruce Omen here, who currently owns the facility that runs the Grand O2 Center. They would be renting the basement from us, so it would be half used by them, half used by us. So the assessor would be the one to determine the tax exemption on that. I did wanna bring up that I, I looked, I'm not sure if it was your ordinance specifically or not, but roughly you need one, one parking space per four chairs. We have over a hundred, so, I mean, we could go up to 400 people at one time, just in parking. It has been vacant for, from what I've found is since Midwest has been there. I think from discussions with Bruce. So we're just looking to really just take ownership of the facility, continue to have the Grand O2 Center, to be able to continue to operate as long as they would like to. And then us to just kind of move in upstairs and have a church in a facility that's really, half of it's not being used right now at all. So that is really what we had brought up. Currently, under the current zoning, it is allowed for hospitality, meeting halls, for office space, clinical counseling settings, and then theater. So we, I mean, we, we kinda do a lot of those things that it falls within as it comes to a meeting hall or counseling. Now, it's not therapist counseling, but I definitely meet with people on a regular basis. And, yeah, is, I think that's, that's it.
Are we allowed to ask questions or not?
We're still in a public hearing if there's any more people that's wanting to speak.
Oh.
Anyone else wish, I, I, is that all you have, Pastor?
That's, that's all when it comes to the rezone, correct?
Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask if there's anybody else that's wishing to address. Anybody else wishing to address the rezone application? Second call, anybody wishing to address the rezoning application? Third and last call, anyone wishing to address the rezoning application? Hearing none, I'll close that public hearing. The next one is public hearing for a conditional use permit for Bethel's Rock Church. So Zach had kind of explained that already. There's just, conditional use is required. So I'll open that up. Public hearing is open for the conditional use portion of that request. Anybody wishing to address that?
I think, again, just, just requesting the conditional use. If the rezone is requested, that we would request for conditional use so then we can actually operate out of there. I think that's, that's really it.
Thank you. Second request, anybody else wishing to address? Third and last call for wishing to address this application. Hearing none, I'm gonna close that public hearing. The third public hearing is for conditional use for Grand O2 to operate their business in that location. So with that, I'm gonna open up that portion as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address that, that application?
Bruce Omen, owner of the Event Center and the property at 32057. We're just requesting the use permit. If the rezone goes through, we'll need the use permit to continue to operate with everything that we do there with our liquor license and that kinda stuff.
Thank you, Bruce. Second call, anybody else wishing to address the application? Third and final call, anybody wishing to address the application? Hearing none, I'm gonna close that public hearing. Okay. Okay, committee discussion on the rezone portion. Input from the commission. Who's first?
I'll go. I think my biggest issue with this is, is the rezone from a business to the residential, the residential business. And it's, I think the biggest part of it is, is what happens because of, because of it, or what might happen because of it. It's sorta like where I live, there's a lot across from me and I live in a residential area. And it's sorta like if someone comes in and says we wanna change that to a residential business just for that one spot because we're gonna have our house connected to, or we're gonna build a building and we're gonna have it be half of our business and half of our residence. And when you change it to a residential business area and that, that house and that family and that business eventually is gonna sell. And what, what could happen in that case is a business just takes up right there, right, tears the house down and does whatever a business does. Now you've got a business in a spot that's a residential area. And we already have residential business areas. So I, I, I understand what, what you're trying to do. But for me, it's the, it's the wrong location because of the zoning, right? So what could happen in the future is you guys decide that you found a better spot that's more convenient or whatever for the church. And then you sell that spot. And what goes there is a house or an apartment building or not another business, right? And that's, that's the tricky part when you get into switching to zones that are not meant for other things. So that's, that's my biggest concern about this. I, I would love for you guys to find a place. And I'd love for it to not be in a business district.
I guess I would say I, I share some of those concerns. I appreciate the fact that it is a empty spot and you're trying to, you know, be there and fill it up. I do have some concerns. If it is rezoned, is Grand O2 able to operate the way that they want to there? And I know we, we have a conditional use permit, but part of the thing is the whole liquor license and whatnot. What do we know about that if it gets rezoned to residential business?
I did call the state Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement and they said it would have to apply for a new license, but they would be able to continue business if that license was approved. And I wasn't able to, I got transferred around, but I wasn't able to talk to anybody else. But that's what I found out from my short conversation with them, so.
Anything else, Chris?
I guess I'd just like to comment too. I mean, it's not like, you know, everything around there is own business pretty much. You know, it's not like there are residences around there. It just, to me, on the surface, it doesn't make sense. And, you know, we kinda talked about it last time, the whole spot rezoning. It just, it opens up a can of worms and I, you know, what comes next sort of deal? Not just with your property, but with a bunch of other properties too, so.
Yeah.
I think those are my concerns also. When we, when we start trying to rezone and, you know, do little spot zonings, we lose kind of the comprehensive plan for the community. And if you look at that map, that whole west side of the highway is all that general business in limited industrial. And if we rezonate into an RB zone, and I, and I agree. If the property gets sold in the future, that means a developer come in, put up a group of homes, and the homes are gonna have a problem with the industry that's already operating there. And so I'm just not comfortable with a spot rezone in an area that doesn't look at all compatible with that zoning. And if for some reason it was rezoned into RB, I'm very uncomfortable with them trying to figure out how the O2 Event Center could even be there because it would not at all be compatible with an R2. So either the new owner gets it and O2 leaves and we have our little spot zoning mess to deal with in the future or it stays with the B1, B2 zoning.
Along those same lines, I'm, I feel the same way. Spot zoning, to me, since I've been a part of the city council or Planning Commission or other committees, it's something that we, we just, we frown upon. I, one thing that I'm very worried about is if we do rezone, if we would rezone that, who's next? What's next? What comes next door or what comes down the street? Or there is another empty business, or there's an empty business near there that could come next and say, I purchased this property and now I wanna rezone this into RB and turn it into residential. And to tell you yes and to tell them no, we'd be opening ourselves up to a whole new can of worms with discrimination, everything else. So that's why I'm strongly opposed to it. I'm, I'm, I don't know what the next step would be. I just, I feel strongly against a spot rezone. And I don't think it would fit in the zoning that's in place now. So I guess, what would be the committee's?
Would I be able to respond to any, anything, any chance?
Sure.
I just had a few, a few questions. The only reason we're applying for rezone is that's what we were suggested was, that was our only really course of action that we can move forward with it. And I agree with all those things you're saying. Spot rezoning doesn't make sense. I fully agree with that. But with that, I know that the only zonings that you guys allow for religious institutions to be in is, I believe, R1, R2, and R3 under conditional use permit. And so when it comes to that, looking at your map, I have a, I took a copy of it there, and looking over that, there's really no opportunity for us within the community. And I know, if you don't mind me saying, I think you had brought up, we, we had spoke the, the terrace and we looked into that. We even tried reaching out after I had spoke with you and you can't get a response from the current owner. And we looked at it, I would say, over a year ago and it was, it was in pretty rough shape. There's places you can see sky. There's mold everywhere. I mean, that would cost significantly more than we're even, we, just financially, we wouldn't even be able to, to purchase that facility. So it would kinda be out of the question for us to even go that route. And then again, there's really no facility. There is a location that you could build, but again, to build a facility, even, even the size of just the upstairs of the Grand O2 Center or the, the property in question would cost two to three times as much as it would be to just purchase the facility currently from him. So when it comes to a rezone, I agree. But I know that you guys have churches to be able to only be in R1, R2, and R3. So we're kinda at the point where, where do we go in the community? Where do we put a place? This is where we, we fully believe we're supposed to be. I mean, like, like I had mentioned last, last month, my wife, myself, our five boys, we moved here. My brother and his wife just moved here. We, between the two of us, we have seven, or the two families, we have seven kids. This is where we wanna be. This is where we wanna raise our families and we wanna be a church here. So I guess that, that's where, going forward, I don't, I'm not sure where we're supposed to go. So maybe a rezone is, that, I mean, that's, that's the route that, that we were suggested. So that's where we're, what we're here requesting. And if that's not the answer, then I guess the question is what, what would be the answer? What would you guys suggest? Would it be, I mean, is there a possibility to amend the current zoning to allow for conditional use for religious institutes to be in a B2? Is that something that's out of the question?
Neil, help, help me out here. But I don't think we can suggest to you
Yep.
what to do. You have to come to us, all right?
If I were to request that, would that be something that's out of the question?
You would have to request that.
Okay.
I mean, you can't just say that.
Yeah, I know, and I know it can't be approved today or anything like that.
You gotta go through the proper application process and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Correct. What we got on the, on the table tonight is a rezone.
A rezone, right. We can't, can't deviate from that whatsoever.
If there's something else that we can work on, that'll have to come at a later time.
Okay, so we went down the suggestion, suggestion, okay. So then we will request, when is the next time we could do this under a new pretense?
I guess the time is, there's an election the night that the next meeting is supposed to be. So I guess if you wanna stay after, we can, we're trying to figure out when that is.
We're gonna, we're gonna discuss the next meeting date.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting, so.
Okay.
Any other comments? Chris, Jesse, Dan? Well, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the zoning request. If that's how I should properly document it, Neil? So I'll make that a motion.
I will second.
A motion and a second to deny the rezone request. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
You'll have to go through the other two also because they are on the table.
Okay.
And then I would suggest that you instruct the city attorney to base, to do the findings of facts based on your conversations tonight.
Okay. Okay, conditional use permit for Bethel's Rock Church. So I guess we denied the rezone, so I'm gonna make a, a motion to deny the conditional use permit also.
Second.
Motion by Gasmie, second by Jesse. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, most carries. So then conditional use permit for the Grand O2.
I will approve that we just denied.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Nobak to deny the conditional use permit for Grand O2. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay. And then I'll direct staff to draw up a findings of fact from city attorney for, to
Okay.
Because that would, that would only give us two days, if just something doesn't happen, and we depend on that, we would have to have an emergency meeting.
Okay.
So if you would just do an extension of the 60-day rule to 120 days and make a motion, and Zach will draft and send it certified, just in case something goes wrong, it's, it's cutting it pretty close.
Okay.
I so move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it moves up to 120 days. Anything else from anybody? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Jesse, second by Diane, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.